Who is in the board chambers?
Thank you, Semi. I'll now ask Maria Abellada to make the announcement of the interpreter.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Maria, estoy para los servicios entrepeticen español.
Thank you, Maria. Now, we're going to head into our 1:30 scheduled matters, which begins with a public hearing to consider the Roland W. White House located at 978 Pioneer Road in Pebble Beach to the Monterey County Register of Historic Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Brandon Swanson with RMA Planning. Our planner, Shelley Glennon. Oh, great, I was just trying to buy some time while you got converted from an attendee to a panelist. So, I didn't need to buy that much time. So, I'll turn it over to our planner, Shelley Glennon, who's going to be presenting this item.
Thank you. Oh, is PowerPoint up? I don't see it.
In process, one second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lopez and Board of Supervisors. Shelley Glennon, Senior Planner, presenting to you a request for the Roland W. White House to be listed on the Monterey County Register of Historic Resources. Next slide. The property site is located at 978 Pioneer Road, Pebble Beach, California. In December of 2019, the property owner submitted a request for their property to be listed on the county's register. Present to Monterey County Code, there are established criteria required to be met for properties to be listed. A historic assessment conducted by a qualified historian determined that the Roland W. White House does meet the criteria as it represents an excellent minorly altered example of a Spanish eclectic style of architecture by noted Californian architect Clarence A. Tantau. Tantau designed the home under commission by the original property owner Roland W. White. Tantau is considered a locally important architect and is one of the most prolific architects during the early development of Pebble Beach. As shown in the photos, the building includes Spanish eclectic style of architecture features such as stucco exterior wall cladding, low pitched gable focal windows, an enclosed front courtyard, and other Spanish eclectic decorative elements. The Monterey County Historic Resource Review Board has reviewed the proposed request, and upon the review recommends that the board approve adding the Roland W. White House to the Monterey County Register of Historic Resources. By approving the listing requests, the property owners can then apply for a Millsat contract to be reviewed by the board at a later date in order to receive a property tax reduction in exchange for voluntary restrictions relative to the preservation and maintenance of the historic resource. Next slide. Staff recommends that the board supervisors adopt a resolution to add the Roland W. White House to the Monterey County Register of Historic Resources. Next slide. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Are there any members of the board supervisors who have questions regarding this? At this point, I can't see your faces, so I'll ask you just to speak up. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to take it to the public. Is there any public comment on this presentation? Seeing nobody by Zoom and nobody in chambers, I'll bring it back to this board for action.
I'd like to just make the comment that I'm delighted to have an opportunity to see this kind of architecture preserved, and I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to add the Roland W. White House to the Monterey County Register of Historic Resources, the local official register of historic resources.
This is Phillips, say a second.
Second from Supervisor Phillips. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Lejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye. Thank you, the motion carries, and we're going to head into item 13, which is to receive a presentation for the board to consider referral number 2019.13, requesting research and assessment of the energy efficiency of all county facilities in pursuit of budget-neutral financing opportunities to maximize energy efficiency and invest in infrastructure modernization. I believe that'll be presented by Lindsay LaRabel. I think she's in the room. Yeah, let's try that out.
What's up? Okay. You guys hear me all right? Good? Great. Good afternoon, Chair Lopez, Board of Supervisors. I am Lindsay LaRabel, I'm the RMA Chief of Facilities, and I am presenting with Ashley Paulsworth, the CAO, Sustainability Project Manager. Our presentation is staff's response to board referral 2019.13, requesting research and assessment of the energy efficiency of all county facilities and pursue budget-neutral financing opportunities to maximize energy efficiency and invest in facilities' infrastructure modernization. Next slide. Staff's recommendation is that the board supervisors receive this report on energy efficiency and provide direction of the following subsequent actions, stated in no particular order. Audit the current year energy usage and emission levels for facilities, fleet, and employee commute to provide a close-up report to the 2013 Municipal Climate Action Plan, known as NCAP. Second would be to identify additional energy efficiency and greenhouse reduction measures through building energy audits and alternative financing opportunities to bring county facilities to net zero by 2030 through the development of a facilities master plan and an asset management plan for all county-owned buildings and facilities. The third would then be to take the information from the asset management plan and implement a asset management, or identifying, implementing, an asset management system, otherwise known as a computer maintenance management system, or a CMMS. And lastly, it would be to create, to conduct a net-zero pilot program aimed at one of our critical facilities through the use of on-bill financing, potential funds from, or financing for potential funds from resiliency grants and programs. This will allow us to create a guide to the, as to the time, effort, and programs needed to invest in achieving this goal before we roll this out, roll out net zero in all our facilities. Next slide. As we look to map out our energy efficiency and facility modernization strategy, we look back at the state and local efforts over the last 14 years as a guideline. In 2016, California Legislature passed Assembly Bill 32, the Green, the California Greenhouse Warming Solutions Act of 2006, which established a mandate to reduce the gate, the state's greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020, approximately 15% below 2005 levels. The California Air Resource Board, or Resources Board, known as CARB, provided a roadmap for reaching this goal, identifying local governments as the key players in achieving this objective. And in 2007, California Building Standard Commission developed CalGreen to enhance the design and construction of building methods to reduce negative environmental impacts and promote sustainable construction practices to reach this 2020 goal. In 2009, RMA partnered with Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, known as AMBAG, to secure an Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant from the Department of Energy. In 2010, the county adopted a new general plan that required the county to prepare a Municipal Climate Action Plan, the NCAP, and a Community Action, Climate Action Plan to achieve the 2020 objectives. In 2011, funding secured from the 2009 Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant was used to perform an energy audit report on 14 county facilities. This report also provided cost-effective measures that would result in energy and emissions savings. In 2013, the board supervisors adopted the Municipal Climate Action Plan, this is the NCAP, which provided a greenhouse gas reduction plan for county operations incorporating the recommended, recommendations from our 2011 energy audit. And in 2014, the board supervisors approved a five-year, it was a $5 million investment. We ended up doing $4.5 million worth of investment into these facilities to implement these energy efficiency recommendations. And in 2017, the county of Monterey adopted ordinance 5285, adding that the county-owned buildings shall meet the CalGreen Tier One standard as the minimum mandatory design standards for newly constructed buildings and major remodel of existing buildings. Additionally, it also states that county-owned buildings shall be subject to renewable energy generation requirements that 15% of the total energy demands are generated on-site. We see these efforts as a building block to define our next goal of achieving zero emissions by 2030 within our county facilities and infrastructure. This would also reflect the American Institute of Architects, known as AIA, 2030 Challenge, a commitment made by more than 1,000 firms across the nation to, in a pledge to create only carbon-neutral buildings by 2030. Next slide. Okay, just to summarize, since two, between 2010 and 2019, between grant and county funding, we've invested over $7 million to implementing energy efficiency measures, measures within the top 12 energy-use facilities to reach our 2020 goals. As of now, the county has reduced costs by approximately $3.5 million and will continue an over half a million a year cost reduction annually, despite having increased square footage significantly through the purchase of Schilling Place Campus and the increased cost of gas per British thermal units, otherwise known as BTUs. And, good news is, we expect the county will have met emission goals of the 2020, our 2020 decreasing greenhouse emissions to 1990 levels due to procuring its energy from Mari Bay Community Power, which provides low or no carbon electricity to the county. And then this will be part of our, we will verify that through our audit that we're suggesting as a recommendation. Okay, next slide. Okay. Ashley will be presenting budget-neutral financing opportunities that we can start implementing in the very near future. These are critical actions to achieve our energy efficiency goals over the next 10 years. From a facilities perspective, my role is to look at how we can optimize our facility modernization through our capital planning so that we maximize the return on our investment, including all energy modernization projects. Just as the general plan guides county development, a facilities master plan provides the same guidance to county long-term development. This allows the county to lay out a five, 10, 15, 20-year roadmap as a guiding, as a planning guide for our county facilities. With a finite amount of county land within our cities, developing a plan will allow the county to optimize all investments in an efficient manner, strategically evaluate future leases and building acquisitions, ensure compatible uses, address public access and transportation needs, plan for utilities and for infrastructure, guide zoning laws while decreasing energy demand in our carbon footprint, and ultimately the growing cost of investing and maintaining and growing square footage. An example of a benefit as it relates to this referral would be the installation of a microgrid at some of our 24-hour facilities where energy disruption has a huge impact on operations. The Tivedad Hospital, Jail, and Juvenile Hall would be a great example of compatible uses that can be sustained by a single microgrid to allow for the county to generate a self-contained energy resource that has the ability to connect and disconnect from the grid to enable its, pardon me, enable it to operate both in grid connect and island mode, so it can operate independent from the grid. Most likely, our energy source would come from the installation of photovoltaic panels, and considering the size and energy demands of these facilities, the area panels needed would be substantial and require strategic planning as to not compromise future growth. All this can be addressed through a facilities master plan. The second suggestion would be to optimize our, and part of our optimizing modernization would be to invest in an asset management system, or the CMMS, the computerized system that I was referring to earlier, that helps systematically guide in our planning, development, operation, maintaining, upgrading, and disposing of assets. A CMS is a software that would help us organize these needs on a digital platform. Some benefits would include reduced equipment downtime and unplanned shutdowns, improve long-term deferred maintenance planning and budgeting to even out the even, the annual scheduled funding needs, optimize resources by limiting scrap and rework, shift to, from a reactive to a proactive work maintenance plan, and this is among the many benefits that a CMMS can provide. This not only saves the county cost, but when our systems are maximizing efficiency, they minimize energy consumption. Again, both these options that I'm bringing forth do require some upfront investment, but the ROI will far exceed the initial costs and allow the county to obtain a net-zero goal. So, thank you, and I'm going to turn over the remainder of the presentation to Ashley to discuss budget-neutral programs and opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. LaRabel.
Yep.
Oh, same presentation, yeah. Next slide.
Thank you. Okay, fabulous. All right, thank you, Lindsay, for that great overview of what energy efficiency has done so far for the county and what some plans we have to strategically move forward. I also want to thank Supervisor Lejo and the board for creating this referral and giving us an opportunity to present today on what we think we can do moving forward to optimize and take advantage of energy efficiency measures here at the county. So, I also recently gave a presentation to the Alternative Energy and Environment Committee where I discussed the results of our 2013 Municipal Climate Action Plan, well, the projected results. And in that presentation, I discussed some measures that could help us to meet our 2030 goals. So, as Lindsay had mentioned, the Global Warming Solutions Act and AB32 and Scoping Plan talk about targets for the year 2020 and 2030. So, as you can see from this slide, we believe that we're going to meet our 2020 goal. I think that we'll probably be reducing our emissions by about 19% from 2005 levels, and the goal for 2030 is to reduce by 40%, and I think we're going to be reducing by about 50% if we adopt some of the strategies that I mentioned at the AEE committee meeting, including taking our buildings to net zero. So, our facilities are definitely an area where we have the most control and some of the most cost-effective solutions for reducing emissions at the county. Some of these solutions are even available at no cost and can avoid cost in the future. So, to be honest, this is, this is an opportunity for the county to lead on green building solutions and simply prove to the building community that we're serious about sustainability. And I just also want to say that I would be remiss if I did not note that tomorrow is Earth Day, so what a fabulous time to be discussing this topic. And as Lindsay had mentioned, the majority of our emissions reductions thus far have actually been due to joining Monterey Bay Community Power, which sources the zero emissions electricity for the county. So, what this means is that our building's emissions are now due mainly to our thermal load or heating. So, if we do want to go in net zero, we have to look at strategies to electrify our buildings. Next slide, please. So, for our purposes, net-zero building is a highly energy-efficient building that does not have any carbon emissions associated with its energy usage. So, what that means is that all of the power sourced to the building is either renewable energy produced off-site or on-site, or it can be potentially produced by renewable fuel, such as biogas from an anaerobic digester or a different type of renewable natural gas. In some cases, we could even take our building's emissions below zero and treat the county as a campus, where we could allocate those negative emissions across the whole county. And one of the first steps, and very important, okay, the very important first step of going net zero is to actually reduce the energy demand on the building itself. So, this is done through tightening the building envelope, it's often called weatherization, and it can be really simple steps, like sealing cracks or putting in more insulation. There's also obviously more complex steps, like different paneled windows. However, the saying here goes, reduce before you produce, so we really need to right-size the building. Okay, so, once we've taken measures to reduce energy demand, we can then take steps to electrify our heating appliances. And doing it this way allows for additional avoided costs during appliance upgrades and replacements, because we'll have a smaller load to be working with in the first place, we'll already have reduced our overall demand. And in many cases, we'll be able to replace boilers with heat pumps as part of scheduled upgrades at appropriate maintenance replacement times, because we've had, have taken these steps to already do an asset management and strategic plan. And what this will allow us to do is to naturally electrify our building stock over the next 10 or 15 years. Next slide, please. All right. So, we are recommending a undertaking, an initial pilot project while the planning of the facility's strategic plan goes underway. This pilot project would include initial audit of our corrections facility for energy efficiency and demand reduction opportunities, as well as a microgrid-ready solar plus storage array that would be designed to provide backup power to the facility in the event of an outage. In addition, we'd be looking at innovative financing methods, such as on-bill finance options, which other counties in California, such as San Benito County, have undertaken and utilized, to work with our electric utility and an outside vendor to monetize energy efficiency savings towards upgrades, as well as working through a power purchase agreement on the solar array that will allow us to monetize the investment tax credit. The corrections facility is a critical facility. Power outages are a serious threat to its operations. Having a true microgrid in place that can power up and power down without the grid and run for an extended period of time and powered by renewable resources is a challenge, but it's a surmountable challenge, like we can do this. And especially right now, the California Public Utilities Commission is offering funding through its self-generation incentive program, which provides rebates of up to 100% for energy storage systems at critical government facilities, and the correctional facility would qualify here. So, we really want this pilot to be designed to be budget-neutral, we want to take a holistic approach. As you can see, there's a lot of moving parts, even with just one building. This means we need to work with a vendor that has all of the capabilities that I mentioned, is willing to work start to finish to incorporate all of the practices and principles that we need, all the way from an energy audit designed to reduce demand, to applying for the grants, to monetizing tax credits, et cetera. And this will allow the project to stay budget-neutral and not require any upfront investment from the county. In turn, any grant funding that we receive for the storage system, or any monetization of the solar tax credits, will still get taken into account in the initial design of the project, and they could potentially turn this project net positive in terms of cash flow for the county. So, all of this needs to tie together to make the project really budget-neutral, and it also needs to be accomplished at a facility that operates 24/7. So, you can see there's quite a bit of sophistication involved, and that's why we really want to do a pilot project as a way to first demonstrate how net zero is possible and how things can all come together before we take it to a larger scale across all of our facilities. So, while we do have this great opportunity in front of us, I do want to point back to the strategic master plan as a way to reach our long-term goals. Okay, next slide. That's it for the presentation. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Ashley. I want to give Supervisor Lejo the first shot, since, as you said, this was his referral. So, Supervisor Lejo, any thoughts, questions for us?
I think the timing couldn't, couldn't be any better with us making a budget decision to obtain a sustainability officer for the county to really help us zoom in and bring some more expertise to making sure that we're on the cutting edge of 21st century of what many local governments are already doing, and, and sometimes our department staff are so overworked that it's nice to have somebody who could just really bring these kind of issues to the forefront. I did have a question, because she meant, she mentioned, you know, some counties moving to try to move up their goals to get to net zero by 2030. Could you give us some examples of what maybe, like San Luis Obispo County, other counties are doing in this realm to try to achieve net zero sustainability sooner rather than later?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that San Luis Obispo is looking at 2035 for carbon neutrality, and so that, I mean, that's a great example right there, and they're, I'm not sure if they've entered into an ESA, an Energy Services Agreement, but I know that the county of San Benito has entered into an ESA in order to achieve some of these goals, and other cities have as well in order to achieve these goals.
Thank you, thank you for that. I did want to just say that I think this, this referral came to us before the whole, our COVID crisis, but the goal was to look at funding mechanisms where we can make our many county buildings dispersed throughout geographically, everywhere in the county, but, but looking at where we could find funding mechanisms that could find those energy efficiencies, and in the end, be able to use those savings to reinvest in our infrastructure and hoping to make our other buildings more energy in the future. So, it really saw it as a way that we can't really lose here, because the funding mechanisms provide that upfront cost that could make this really possible, but what we do need is staff that know how to follow these through, as was said, from beginning to end, getting the right contractors that have the right experience, so that we get very competent and capable people helping us move these projects and these goals along. So, I think this is an exciting time for Monterey County to try to look and take our goals to another level. It's where our state has gone and now encouraging local government to do a little bit more, and I think this is the right time. So, thank you for your presentation, and I look forward to starting, it's hard to start all at once, but as you, as you very strategically put forward, starting with the pilot first and showing the board and the community how this could work, then we're able to kind of build the momentum to address other, other buildings in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Lejo. Supervisor Adams?
Thank you, thanks very much, Ashley, for your presentation. It was just terrific, I really appreciate it. And Lindsay, thank you as well for pulling all of this together. I had a couple of questions, and the first one is a practical one about the pilot program that you're talking about, and you indicate that it would be at the corrections facility. Are you talking about the correctional training facility in Solidad, Solidad State Prison? Or are you talking about one of the jails?
Yeah, the jail complex, the address is 1410 Natividad Road.
So, that's the, that's the new jail, right? Not the renewed jail?
Supervisor Adams, that includes the jail and the, which includes the jail housing addition that RMA is currently working on.
Okay, good, great. Okay, thank you for that, I was curious about that. And then, do you have any, any idea of what the cost would be for the pilot?
Okay, so, we're attempting to do this project in a way that is completely budget-neutral, if not net positive. So, the, the idea behind entering into an energy service agreement with an energy service company is that there is no upfront financial investment, and the, the costs of the contract are paid through your savings on your utility bill. So, parts of this contract are orchestrated, or could be orchestrated theoretically through PG&E, which, with on-bill financing. There's also, as I had mentioned, there's a grant right now available, it's through PG&E as well, but it's, it could cover up to 100% of the battery. So, and then the solar array portion would be paid for through a power purchase agreement, which again includes outside investment and is paid back over the course of the, over the course of your energy service agreement, the terms of which have yet to be decided and need to be worked through at the AEE committee meetings, probably with county council, finance, and contracts and purchasing staff involved. And so, I would say that some of the, there are some unknowns, but we're not expecting to put money upfront for anything at this point.
Well, thank you, I really think it's, it's great. I welcome you to the county, I think this is your first presentation, if I'm not mistaken. Is that about right, to the full board?
Yes, this is my first board presentation.
Well, you did a great job, and thank you for this. Obviously, I'm supportive of anything that we can do to, to move forward with the idea of being net neutral. I think that would just be wonderful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Adams. I'm going to go to the Chair of the Alternative Energy and Environment Committee, Supervisor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, and, and before I get into the questions, I just want to say that the, the way that Ms. LaRabel and Ms. Paulsworth turned a relatively narrowly constructed way that Ms. Larrable and Ms. Paulsworth turned a relatively narrowly constructed referral into an opportunity to come showcase the value of having a sustainability manager on board is quite impressive and really great to see the kinds of things that we've been working on in the Environmental Energy and Alternative Energy and Environment Committee brought forward so well and so quickly to our full board. So, my two questions are, the microgrid was, I believe, in the presentation talked about as, including the jail, the hospital, and something else. And I guess I'm wondering why in developing the pilot, we wouldn't look at the entire area that might benefit from the microgrid?
This is Lindsay. I think that that makes sense. Part of our plan was to bring forward a facilities master plan, and that will take some strategic planning, because it will take actual, it will likely be ground-mounted photovoltaic. Doing roof-mounted could be very complex and difficult for long-term maintenance. So, we see it being a ground-mounted system, and that wants to be, at a facility like Natividad, we'll call it the complex. So, that includes everything from the rural yard to the park, or the soccer complex, all the land that the county owns there. It's a finite amount of area, and we see this as an opportunity to really do something or make sure that all development, including our energy efficiency measures, in an efficiency way. So, we want to make sure that development is compatible and that whatever we do is done once, and it doesn't hinder future development needs. So, this will be all part of the plan, working together in tandem to put together the strategy that optimizes opportunities. So, while we do look at it, we think it should be incorporated as part of understanding the master plan development for that complex.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I was thinking that it would be more practical to take the whole thing, but, you know, I trust your judgment, and of course, hopefully it's scalable so that we can just add on. One thing I would mention is, as you're looking at the way to put the financing together for this, I know that Monterey Bay Community Power has an emphasis on microgrids, and I think their program is loans, but depending on the interest rate and so on, it might end up being, you know, that might be an advantageous component, perhaps. Anyway, as long as you're aware of it. And then, my other question is, you didn't speak to this per se, but when we look at where our carbon footprint now is, a big chunk of it is the employee commute, and I wonder if you are analyzing now our reduced carbon footprint now that we know that many of our employees can telecommute. What are your thoughts and goals to work with department heads and staff to really be able to sustain the kind of progress that we're making in that arena going forward?
Yeah, thank you so much for that. It's a very interesting question, and I think it's, the answer is that we're, we are tracking the number of employees that are working remotely and working closely with HR on that activity and the updating of our telecommuting policy. We haven't yet put together, I think, maybe like a map of where the employees are that are working remotely, but it is definitely something that I think we need to consider in terms of growth, and I think Lindsay could speak a little more to that part.
Yeah. I think that's a really good point, and that the future of how we work is changing, and we're going to be going into more telecommuting. I think we're going to see that across the board in all industries, so the county probably will get on board with that. And that will be a part of our master planning. So, again, when we have each department, we're seeing, you know, they expand, but really, master planning will help us understand future department growth and maximizing square footage. So, that's really the key here, is that we're not just casting a net and just keep growing, because with that comes cost. It comes facilities, maintenance, cost, and that's an annual thing. And so, we're really looking about how each department's going to be working now and in the future, and how we can accommodate growth, and especially doing compatible, going back to that compatible development, that we want to encourage people to commute. We want to make sure that there's public transportation, that any buildings that we acquire, or that we lease, or build are in places that we provide public transportation as well, so.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Yep.
Supervisor Phillips?
I agree. It's a great thought, great program. Appreciate the presentation. I know back a year or so, we discussed informally with Dr. Baumann about doing something like this, and we, I know we talked with Scudder Solar and other companies that how we could partner with our local, some of our local contractors. So, I appreciate it. It's exciting.
I'm also supportive of the effort, especially that budget neutral thing. You know, that rang really true for me. But thank you guys for all the work that you've put in on this. Supervisor Alejo, since it was your referral, any final thoughts for us, or additional direction you want to see given?
Nope. If we need a motion, I'll make that motion after the public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this item? So, if you're joining us via Zoom, the way to make a public comment is to open the Participants' tab in the Zoom meeting. At the bottom, you'll see a raise hand function. If you're on a phone line and have called into the Zoom line, you can punch star nine in order to raise your hand to be recognized. So, seeing no hands going up, we'll bring it back to this board for potential action.
Can we move, do we move forward on staff's recommendations as a motion?
I've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Alejo? Supervisor Alejo? Supervisor Phillips? Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Okay, sorry, that was just for fun. Thank you so much. We really appreciate the presentation. Okay, so, we're going to head into Item 14, which is conduct a public hearing, the public comment period, to adopt a resolution to approve the first substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and Ms. Anastasia Wyatt.
Chair and Supervisor. Today, we have substantial amendments for the Community Development Block Grant Program up. These substantial amendments will help us move funding. We have had every year does an annual test to make sure that we don't have more than one and a half times our annual allocation of CDBG funds on hand, and the City of Greenfield had a project with their Walnut Avenue Improvement Project that we need to move funding from that project into another project to purchase fire equipment, much-needed fire equipment. So, this funding, these substantial amendments will help us move program funding to where it needs to be to make that deadline with HUD. Next slide. So, in order to do this, we need to conduct a public hearing, close the public comment period, which was 30 days, and adopt a resolution to approve the first substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2018 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan by reallocating the City of Greenfield's 2018-19 award of $518,475 to the city's 2019 project. Next slide. So, each action plan, there are different, each time you move funding around, it's a substantial amendment to that action plan. So, approve the second substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan to increase funding for the City of Greenfield's purchase of the fire apparatus equipment, and add North County Recreation and Parks District of $65,650 Neighborhood and Recreational Facility Project into the action plan, and authorize me to submit these amendments to the federal government, the HUD. Next slide. I think that's it. Yep.
So, can I just get some clarification from council? I need to open a public hearing on the first one, close that one, and authorize the second one without a public hearing? Is that correct? Okay, just wanted to be clear on that. Questions from board members? Supervisor Parker, I see your hand up.
Great, thank you. Quick question. I was a little confused about why we're approving a first and second amendment, but we're only submitting the second one. Could you just explain that for me?
We're approving and submitting all substantial amendments in this.
Okay. The way it's worded in the board report made it look like we were only submitting the second one, so it just was a little strange to me. So, that's why the question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from supervisors?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think what you were referring to is the first substantial amendment to the action plan was done January 7th, and then this is the second amendment to that action plan.
Ah, so, you've already submitted the first one?
Right. And that's, so we did one substantial amendment when we moved forward with the interim project. We moved funding that was unallocated. That happened back then. So, now we're doing a substantial amendment, a second substantial amendment to that action plan.
Okay, so why?
So, each time we move.
Yes, I get that. So, why are we approving the first one if we already approved it?
There is a different year and a different substantial amendment.
Okay, yeah, okay. No, it's all right.
There's a substantial amendment to the 1920 and a substantial amendment to the 1819, so.
Ah, yes. Okay, you're following the arcane details. That's excellent. It's confusing to the rest of us, but.
I know, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's HUD.
Okay. So, if there's no additional board comments or questions at this period, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing regarding the first substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2018 Community Development Block Grant. Is there any public comment? Is there any coming in via the Zoom? Seeing none coming in, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to this board for an approval of the first substantial, first substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2018 Development Block Grant, Urban Development Block Annual Action Plan.
Move approval. Phillips?
Motion for Phillips?
Second. Second. Parker?
Second from Parker, and we'll take a roll call vote on the first item.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the item, item two under that, which is to approve the second substantial amendment to the Urban Counties 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan for 2019, which is increase funding for the City of Greenfield's purchase of a fire apparatus. So, if there's a motion?
So, move and authorize the staff actions that are necessary.
Thank you. Got a motion from Parker, second from Adams. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Alejo?
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips?
Aye.
Supervisor Parker?
Aye.
Supervisor Adams?
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Lopez?
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. I believe that's all we needed on that item. Thank you so much for your presentation, Anastasia, and we're going to head into a presentation by Juan Rodriguez, our Civil Rights Officer, and Heather Sakamoto on our Equal Opportunity Plan for 2021.
Thank you, Chair Lopez. Good afternoon, members of the public, Chairperson Lopez, supervisors, CAO, County Council, and Clerk of the Board staff. My name is Juan Rodriguez, and I'm the Civil Rights Officer for the county of Monterey. On the line is Heather Sakamoto from Biddle Consulting Group. I will introduce her more fully in a minute. And not with us today is Gabriel Duñez, a staff member from the CRO who helped us with the development of what is being presented today. So, today, we are presenting for your consideration and approval the county's Equal Opportunity Plan. What is the Equal Opportunity Plan? The Department of Justice defines an Equal Opportunity Plan, or EOP, as a comprehensive document that analyzes a recipient's relevant labor data market, as well as the recipient's employment practices, to identify possible barriers to the participation of women and minorities in all levels of the recipient's workforce. Its purpose is to ensure the opportunity for full and equal participation of men and women in the workplace, regardless of race, color, or national origin. In other words, at its most elemental, it is the county's plan to ensure, to the extent possible, that our workforce reflects the population we serve. As a federal contractor, we are required to prepare an Equal Opportunity Plan. However, in addition to being a federal legal requirement, the EOP advances our organization's goals of promoting diversity and inclusion across all county departments by using the EOP as a diagnostic tool. And EOP requires statistical data analysis, and for that, we work with Heather Sakamoto of Biddle Consulting Group. Ms. Sakamoto is an Equal Employment Opportunity and an Affirmative Action Consultant with Biddle. She specializes in Equal Employment Opportunity consulting and litigation support, among many other things she does for her organization. We have been working with Ms. Sakamoto and with Biddle since approximately 2013, so we've been able to leverage the historical analysis or data that they have to prepare subsequent Equal Opportunity Plans. And with this, I will turn it over to Ms. Sakamoto for the workforce analysis.
Great. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right. Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the board. I hope you're all doing well and staying safe during these unprecedented times. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right. So, I've added my contact information into the slide deck in the event you have any questions that come up after we close this item. Of course, we'll have time for you to ask questions at the end of this presentation as well, but sometimes things come up later. Next slide, please. All right. So, in the interest of time, we've kind of pared down the presentation from prior years just so we can get at the heart of, you know, what the EOP stands for. So, every other year, we review the overall workforce demographics to gain a better understanding of the county's diversity year over year. In the ring on the left, females are represented by an orange subsection, and they account for roughly 69% of the workforce at the county. In the ring on the right, detailed race percentages are displayed, showing that the county is roughly 70% minority or people of color. In both cases, the county has increased representation of the historically disadvantaged groups year over year, but we can talk about more of the specifics a little bit later. Next slide, please. All right. So, Juan gave some good background on, you know, what an Equal Opportunity Plan is, and he hit on some of the key elements. And I want to reiterate that the purpose of an Equal Opportunity Plan is obviously regulatory, but we also create an Equal Opportunity Plan for a diagnostic tool, in a sense. And so, it accomplishes a set of goals. And the first main goal is to analyze the county's workforce demographics in terms of gender and race, and compare it, like Juan said, to the relevant labor market. The idea is determined, to determine where the county falls short. In order to do this appropriately, we group all of the employees into subgroups called job groups, which isn't typical terminology, but essentially, the employees are grouped into these job groups based on similarity in wage, content, and opportunity. You may have heard the term similarly situated before. So, once we've grouped the employees into these job groups, we compare their demographics to the relevant labor market using census data, narrowed by special filters that isolate the data by requisite skill sets. So, essentially, we can compare the demographic composition of, you know, the nurses' job group to the census data for nurses only. We want to ensure that we're truly comparing apples to apples. Once the comparison is made for all the job groups, we can actually identify where the county falls short of this expectation. In this chart, we're showing the comparison for females within their respective job groups. Each job group has a two-digit code assigned to it for easier reference. You can see these. You can see these codes along the bottom. For example, 01 is the highest level of management, and 20 is entry-level service and maintenance. In this particular chart, the blue represents the actual representation of females in each of these job groups, and the orange is what is expected. Out of 20 job groups, there are only seven where the county fell short and will continue to implement plans to make progress towards these areas of opportunity. Next slide, please. Okay. In this slide, it graphically displays the same information as the last slide, but instead we are looking at overall minority and people of color comparisons. Out of 20 job groups, there were actually only two where the county did not meet expectations, which is an outstanding result, especially if you look at other similar reporting counties. Next slide, please. All right. So another goal of the Equal Opportunity Plan is to track and make progress towards the selection and retention of protected veterans and individuals with disabilities. So the rings in this slide showcase the representation of those two groups within the county's workforce. Currently, there is a 2% veteran representation. The benchmark for veterans the county is working towards is 5.7%. That's the number that was, it's a set standard that reflects the percentage of veterans in the civilian labor force, and it is reevaluated every year. For individuals with disabilities, there is a 4% county representation. The benchmark is set 7%. While the observed percentages may seem a little low, it is important to understand that the employee's self-ID response is completely voluntary. And the majority of those who do respond, respond with "I do not wish to disclose." So obtaining any measurable result is proven to be difficult. I want to add that since the responses, self-ID forms are voluntary, we can reasonably assume that there are more veterans and individuals with disabilities in the county's workforce that we don't know about. So the focus is the same for all counties and public-private sector employers. The need to foster a feeling of inclusion and openness that will in turn garner a higher response rate for these two sensitive groups, that's, that's pretty much where everyone's headed. That's what their focus is. This can be tackled in a number of ways, but employee resource groups are the most common and the most effective. Next slide, please. So I try to include this slide almost every time I present to the board. It's one of my favorites because I highlight some of the, some of the wins are victories, I guess. So I wanted to share those with you. Earlier, I showed the overall female minority representation and where the county has areas of opportunity. Since the last Equal Opportunity Plan, overall female utilization is up 0.8%. This may seem small, but this slight uptick impacted job groups where the county fell short in female incumbency in 2018. In 2018, the county had nine job groups where female incumbency fell short. But as a result of positive outreach and recruitment, we eliminated the shortfall to only seven job groups for 2020, making progress. Specifically, the county increased the female representation in the management and professional categories. Similarly, for the overall minority groups, utilization is up almost a percent. Again, the percent rise doesn't seem like much, but it had a positive impact on one of the job groups from 2018. In 2018, the county had three job groups where minority incumbency fell short. For 2020, there are now only two. Positive growth. Another positive that isn't listed here is that all job groups where an opportunity was identified for females and minorities in 2020, they were also identified as areas of opportunity in 2018, meaning no new areas are popping up. So the county continued to focus on the existing areas without having to add in new action plans for new problematic job groups. We didn't talk much about the actual selection process for the county, but it is a major component of the Equal Opportunity Plan. We do monitor in granular detail the hiring, promotion, and termination processes to ensure that no particular group, gender or race, is systemically negatively impacted by the county's decisions. We are happy to report that again, that we have not, not found any areas of patterns or trends impacting a particular group in any one process. And last but not least, we briefly discussed the low self-ID response rates earlier, specifically surrounding protected veterans and individuals with disabilities. The county, when being compared to other public-private entities, falls above average on the overall response rate. We can always improve upon the process, but it is important to note that we have a good jump start on it. And just so you guys know, the typical response rate for most of, you know, the federal contractors that I work with, it does sit around a 2% overall response rate. And of that small percentage is where we get the yeses, which is usually far south of 1%. It's usually like 0.1. So the county is actually doing really well. I believe the response rate is actually like 13%, which is extremely high. There's always more work to be done as we try to push the numbers upwards and, but I, I think this is, it's a really good start, and I wanted to share that with you. Other than that, I think that, that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you, Chairperson Lopez. We continue with our efforts to work with the Human Resources Department and individual departments to work on developing, on implementing and monitoring EOP compliance. Although we, as you heard from Ms. Sakamoto, we are doing well in terms of diversity, we also need to focus on inclusion, which is making people feel welcome when they're working for the county. Some of the initiatives we will be focusing on the next two years of the plan, if you approve this plan, would be employee resource groups to use as training grounds for management positions, outreach, and inclusion. We would like to focus initially on veterans, on individuals with disabilities, and the African-American communities. We will also collaborate, and we've had discussions with Jason Cameron from the Military Veterans Affairs Office to learn what else we can do to promote outreach to and inclusion of the veteran community. And training, training, training. We focus resources on the civil rights training, which contains elements of implicit bias and governing for racial equity. Working with HR, we are helping to provide implicit bias training to all of the individuals involved in the hiring process, as well as we're going to work on developing a more advanced implicit bias training for our workforce, focusing initially on supervisors and managers. We continue to use our talent acquisition database, a user-driven outreach database, to reach the most diverse talent pool that we can. And we continue to work with the Equal Opportunity and Civil Rights Advisory Commission to help departments with their outreach, hiring, and retention through review of and presentation of their departmental EOPs. And with that, I conclude the, my piece of the presentation unless the board has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I'll look to my fellow board members and see if anybody has comments or questions. I see a hand up from Supervisor Parker.
What a surprise, huh? Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Sakamoto. I have to tell you that this presentation distilled the information in the written materials very well. It was, that was a heck of a lot of information to try to digest, and you, you really summarized it very well. I appreciate that. So I have a couple of questions. One has been answered about the employee resource groups. Another question is, in the, I, I really appreciate the progress that we're making. So clearly, the Equal Opportunity Office, HR, the departments, are all really working well together to move the, the needle. And I know that there are some particularly challenging job groups. One question I have is, do we now, in addition to doing the outreach that we do, do we follow a process where now, when resumes and applications come in, that the screening process allows people to move forward without identifying gender or race or ethnicity? So that it's, it's just qualifications-based?
This is Juan, Supervisor Parker. That, that would be a question more specific for the HR department. However, I will say that we've been engaged or using blind screening for some time now, where the information of the applicant is, is screened off only qualifications and basically the answers to the supplemental questions.
Great. I guess, yeah, you, you know the professional term for what I was trying to describe. So it sounds like that, that is in place?
Yes, Supervisor.
Great. Thank you. And then another question I have that wasn't in the presentation but was in the materials. I noticed that departments are responsible for administering exit interviews and watching for any trends. Do departments report to HR or the Equal Opportunity Office the, the content or the summary of the messages in those exit interviews? And not to say that any of our departments would do this, but if there, if there were some comments that were negative or whatever, that, you know, not just one, but maybe a few that I could see as a human being, the people or human beings, that the people in the department might not want to move that information forward. And of course, if we don't know about something, it's hard to do something about it. So anyway, I just wonder what is the, kind of the, the second set of eyes on those kinds, that kind of information that we may be gleaning from exit interviews?
This is Juan, Supervisor Parker. I can tell you that's, that's, again, another question if you want to go into specificity for HR. However, I will tell you that HR does conduct exit interviews, and they do receive the information outside of the department process so that, that you avoid that, not wanting to. I think what you're referring to is probably looking bad. And I will tell you that on occasion, very, very rarely, but if our office needs to be involved, HR also communicates with us.
Okay. Great. Because I would think that sometimes exit interviews might tell you how welcome people are feeling, for instance. And so, good. I'm glad to hear that if there is something that might be in the purview of equal opportunity that you, that you get that so that whatever needs to happen in terms of really looking at different procedures or policies or operational things at the, in the workplace can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. See Supervisor Phillips has his hand up.
Yeah. Frankly, I'm pretty impressed with our stats. I guess we could do better in disability and veterans. But, you know, I started to work in this county 49 years ago. And then almost all the attorneys were white males, and the supervisors and managers almost were white males. So I think we got to look at how far we've come in the diversity of the county. And as self-identified veterans, I, we can, I can add to that since I'm a retired veteran. So that, that will up our stats a little bit. So thank you for the presentation. Very informative.
Thank you, Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Lejo.
First of all, I want to thank our civil rights office and the consultants who did this analysis. I think we've come a long way, just in my four years as supervisor, to see where the office is able to give us these kind of measurements. So we, as a board, could do a better job, but also all our different department heads and staff could be aware that this is, we take this very seriously. It's an important goal for our county. We're doing well in a lot of areas. There's other areas where we could do an improvement on. But, but Monterey County is a very diverse county. As was pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, we're almost 70% people of color. And it's always a good sign when our local government looks and reflects the people that we represent among our ranks, you know. So I, I appreciate the work that's being done. And it's not just having a report, but it's being able to have the trainings and to be able to implement it and, and make conscious decisions so that we, we are having a workforce that is reflective of the residents of our county. So I think the whole team for the presentation and for, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Adams.
Chairperson Lopez, I think she's.
Unmuted. I am unmuted, am I not?
You are now.
How you are.
Go for it.
So thank you again. It was a really interesting report, and I, I enjoyed going through it. I just had a question regarding the data. It sounds like women and minorities are doing well, and I'm happy for that. I'm just wondering if there's any way that the data could be conveyed in a different sort of format so that visually we could see the disparity between minority groups and women, especially as it relates to the management and leadership roles? I think that might be, to be able to, to just see that clearly might be something of interest.
This is Juan, Supervisor Adams. If you look at, and obviously it's a little bit filled with the industry lingo that, that I know, but if you look at the job groups, it can tell you a little bit more in terms of how it breaks into management and non-management positions. So like Ms. Sakamoto mentioned, job group one is management. And you can see, there's a chart that we prepare based on Ms. Sakamoto's information, but also give to HR so they can look at the information in a more digestible way. Instead of having to look through that 50-page report, we give them a one-pager, basically.
Okay. Good. Okay. And it's from your perspective, are women and minorities at the, at the most senior level also well-represented?
I think even as Supervisor Lejo mentioned, there's always a better and more work that can be done. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a matter of working together with departments in terms of, I mean, even from the get-go from outreach to make sure that the opportunities are out in the communities that people know about, to, you know, training and give people opportunities within the organization. Like, like everything, I think, I'm one of those people that always thinks that you can always do better. So we always find ways to try to improve and, and get them numbers a little bit better than they are, always.
Good for you. Thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And Juan, on my behalf, I just want to say thank you. I know it's been a pleasure working with you to, you know, along with Supervisor Lejo on the committee and watching this presentation come forward today. I was really curious how you guys were going to condense so much information. And you guys did a great job of presenting the highlights in a way that I think was easy to consume, digest, and, and understand. So thank you, guys, for this wonderful presentation that continues to show Monterey County progress, which is the goal. And so thank you for your support. And with that, I will open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm going to step over to the Zoom and see if we have anybody raising their hand on the Zoom. Seeing as we have no public comment on the Zoom, I'll bring it back to this board. And at this point, I believe we're just receiving the presentation. And so I want to thank Ms. Sakamoto and Mr. Rodriguez one more time. Thank you for all of your efforts. We appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, I think there, on the, on the agenda, it's asked that we approve and adopt the plan that's been presented and direct the civil rights officer to implement it. And among the things that he mentioned that he would be doing to go, you know, further develop and implement would be the, the employee resource groups to provide that sense of welcome and, of course, continuing with the implicit bias training and extending that. There may have been something else, but I, I would, I would so move both the plan and his proposed strategies to expand on the work that already exists.
Thank you, Supervisor Parker. You're correct. That's what I get for looking to council for confirmation that it was just a report.
On that fine.
It's on video, Les. Can I, can I, was there a second there from Supervisor Adams?
It was the second.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call. Roll vote.
Supervisor Lejo.
Aye.
Supervisor Phillips.
Aye.
Supervisor Parker.
Aye.
Supervisor Adams.
Aye.
Chair Supervisor Lopez.
Aye. Thank you again. Okay. At this point, we're going to have a readout from closed session.
There was no reportable action in closed session, Supervisor.
Thank you. So as we head to adjournment, I just want to remind folks that I am hosting a town hall tonight. And once again, want to thank those folks here in the room, especially Tess, who's going to be our rock star tonight, making sure that we don't get Zoom bombed and keeping some control on the Zoom for the town hall. But thank you all again for your efforts in that town hall. We'll start at 6:00 PM and broadcast live on the county page. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tess. She's been doing. She's been doing a good job for us.